Please rise, salute the flag.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Vito.
Present.
Counselor Ivana Nada.
Present.
Counselor Recupro. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Taylor.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Zavitt.
Present.
Eleven members present, Mr. Chairman.
The first item on the agenda is memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have the first resolution in regards to the late Martin Luther King.
We have the first resolution in regards to Martin Luther King introduced by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Brown, all members of the city council. Whereas the late Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was a leader of great courage and skill who became known as a drum major of the American Civil Rights Movement to enfranchise black citizens. And whereas Dr. King's life was tragically cut short by an assassin's bullet in April of 1968 in Memphis, Tennessee, while he was there to champion the cause of underprivileged workers. And whereas due to the efforts of many dedicated people who believe Dr. King deserves national recognition, the third Monday in January is nationally recognized as a day to remember Dr. King, his legacy and the causes for which he so gallantly fought and died. And whereas Massachusetts had the privilege of Dr. King's presence when he lived and studied in Boston University School of Divinity, receiving his PhD in 1953. And whereas Dr. King's life will always shine as a light for those without hope and as an example to be emulated by all who care about their fellow human beings, regardless of race, religion, class of nationality, now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognizes January 18th, 2021, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Chelsea and asks all citizens to reflect upon the significance of this extraordinary man's life.
Counselor Leo Robinson asked that this be adopted under suspension. Seeing no objections, Counselor Robinson, you have the floor. No comments. Calvin Brown.
Last week we recognized and we celebrated Dr. King's birthday here. We had a great virtual event. Normally, we would have it in person, but because of what we've all been dealing with the past year, the pandemic, we were unable to have it. But because of the leadership of Reverend Whitley, Sandra Whitley, we were able to get a dynamite speaker to come out and share with us her dream, the Honorable Angel Kelly of the Honorable Courts here in the Commonwealth Superior Court of Massachusetts. It was a great program. We had over 100 people in attendance online. We had more heard that was trying to get on and hear it. But it was a dynamite show. It was something that was really worthy to continue our legacy of celebrating Dr. King's, not only his dream, but also his legacy. He would have turned 92 years last, the 15th, but his dream still lives alive. We had a great following, elected officials, the city manager, clergy, everyone came out. It was a great testimony of how we still believe that Dr. King's dream is relevant to what we do here in the city of Chelsea throughout this past year, where we've seen this racial injustice and the brutality of the police. But we've seen the struggle that he was fighting for back in 64 and 63 that we're still fighting for today in 2020, 2021. But it gives us great hope to know that we can get along and we can work together with our brothers and sisters in blue, our African-Americans, our Caucasians, our Hispanics, and all nations. We coming together. That's the dream that Dr. King want us to have. That's the hope that he want us to share. This was all illuminated last week through the testimony of Honorable Angel Kelly, the judge. And so it was great to be part of it. It's great that we're still going through and still keeping his dream alive. And as we go forward and get ready to celebrate Black History Month, we hoping that we still keep this energy alive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else, any other counselors that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Next resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson, all members of the Chelsea City Council. Whereas in 1926, famed African-American historian Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Negro History Week to celebrate Black history, accomplishments, diversity, and achievements. Whereas Carter G. Woodson valued education and believed that it was never too late to learn, it is beneficial for all Americans to continue to learn about the heritage and the experiences of all Americans. And whereas it is through learning that we become enlightened and come to understand each other more clearly. And whereas Black History Month allows for discussion of our country's legacy of slavery, institutional, and structural racism. Whereas this year's theme for 2021, Black History Month, is Black Family, Leadership, and Service. And we are honoring longtime Chelsea business owner Paul Smith for his leadership and service to the community, along with our Chelsea Police Officers Barbosa and Daniels for their service, representation, and leadership, not only in the department, but in the community as well. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby recognizes February as Black History Month, Black Family, Leadership, and Service. Thank you to the Lewis H. Latimer Society, Bunker Hill Community College, Reverend Sandra Whitley, Chelsea Public Schools, and the Chelsea Black Community for their contributions to the city of Chelsea and beyond.
Counselor Robinson.
I adopted shenanigans under suspension. There are three individuals here with us tonight that I'd like to present them with a certificate. The first person is Paul Smith, was born and raised in Chelsea. He's a longtime business owner, having his cleaning business company and a bar. He's a historian of the African-American Chelsea history, as well as being a mentor for the younger generation. He's still in search of the best corned beef sandwich since Pressman's Deli. Officer Barbosa became the first black female officer of the Chelsea Police Department in 2016. Since then, she has received compliments from the entire community in regards to her service and friendliness. Officer Daniels became a Chelsea Police Officer in 2015. Officer Daniels and Officer Barbosa have been in the community service team. They both have ran the youth academy for three times this year, as well as being SROs in the Chelsea Public Schools. These people are being recognized for their service, leadership, and contributions into making Chelsea a diverse and inclusive community. I'd like to take this time to be able to present them with a certificate.
Before doing so, before doing so, I'll let the other counselors have any statements. Counselor Brown.
President, I want to congratulate the recipients tonight of the resolution, specifically my good friend, Officer Barbosa, who I have known much longer before she became a police officer here in the city of Chelsea. I had the honor and privilege of working with her in the same building and we spoke years prior to her becoming a police officer. And every day that I saw her, every conversation I heard from her that she wanted to be a police officer. We talked about her child and I told her about police work and what she had to do and never deterred her from her dream of becoming a police officer. She tried, she was committed to coming to Chelsea, and she didn't even know I was from Chelsea. Not only did she not know I was from Chelsea, she didn't know I had any doings going in Chelsea. But I'm so grateful, I've watched her across Broadway here. I watched her do her job here. She's doing it with dignity, respect, honor. And I just want to applaud her and wish God speed and blessings upon her as she continue to do the work here. And my friend, Officer Daniels, who's always stood out, you know? He stood out from day one, since I believe when I first started recognizing him in our community around 16 or 17, but he's always been fair. I mean, he's always been on his post, he's always been directly doing the job that they put out there from him, whether he's doing the detail, whether he's just actually out in Bellingham Square under the clock. He showed that he really cares about the city of Chelsea. He's proud to be here. And I approach him, how you guys doing, how you ladies and men are doing today? And there's never no angry or hostility against the leadership. It's always, we're doing our job and I always tell him, I say, just be careful out here, you know, because there's a lot of hostility, especially in the last few years towards police officers. But I believe these police officers, men and women, are well protected. And I just want to thank you, and this is a good time for we to recognize you and continue to be a light in our city. Thank you.
Any other counselors like to make any statements? Seeing none, at this time, I'll allow the, please ask the three recipients of the awards to please step forward so that we may take a five-minute recess and take some pictures here in the dais. Thank you. Okay, at this moment, we're going to move on to the public speaking portion. I do want to recognize that we have Representative Jessica Gianino joining us tonight. Hello, Jessica, nice to you. Thank you. And if there's also, we have the, from the school committee, Rosemary Carlisle is joining us. If anyone would like to address the city council at this moment during the public speaking portion, whether here or out there in WebEx, please just raise your hand and I'll try to see you on the, on the monitor. Representative Jessica, yes, you have the floor. Oh, hold on, we don't hear you yet. Audio from the outside boosting in, so... Hold on one second. Because we can't hear if the... Jessica, try unmuting yourself. And try one more time. Testing, we don't hear you in the hall. Hold on one second. We have a team working on it, because my... We're trying to address this. For those of you watching on WebEx, we cannot hear. Your sound is not coming over the speakers as usual, and it's only coming through our speakers from our laptops, which then if we try to use that, it ends up having a lot of feedback. So my fear is, at this point, if we don't fix this, then later on in the meeting, any counselors that want to speak, we will not be able to hear you over the speakers and it'll cause issues. I'm getting a message from our representative who says... I'll have to shut off my mic. Rebooting. Testing. Testing. Jessica, can you say something? Yes.
My thanks from, and will also be offations from my office as well. I'll be delivering them this week, so thank you and congratulations.
Anybody else from the audience would like to speak? Ms. Joan Cromwell? Please unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect, thank you. My name is Joan Cromwell and I'm president of Chelsea Black Community. I live at 38 Addison Street, Chelsea. And I just want to start with recognizing the folks that were honored tonight, Officer Clifford, Officer Barbosa, and my uncle, Paul Rivera Smith. All of you are strong contributors to our community and we do appreciate your work every day. And I also want to say I was so proud of our Black Lives Matter March when Officer Clifford led us and he was proud and you could feel his pride resonating through in such a positive manner that it just made the march even more meaningful when you have law enforcement and representatives such as Officer Clifford and Officer Barbosa there to be a part of our community. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And my uncle Paul, he is a lifelong resident. He moved away for a little while, but he came back and God bless him because his civic obligation to our community is, deserves a standing ovation. He's out there during elections, he's recruiting folks to stand up for what he believes in. He buys him coffee and doughnuts. He's an amazing, amazing person that is, stands 10 feet tall. So kudos to you, Uncle Paul, and God bless you, and I'm so proud of you. I just also want to recognize that Black History Month is approaching us. And as I said the last time I was on, that, you know, was a little challenging this year, but we are going to celebrate as a community as we do for the past years. It's a different type of a celebration, but it's still going to be robust and full and meaningful. So with that, I just want to say on February 1st, the calendar is actually put together, but I've been, we've been working on the virtual events and making sure that we're trying to avoid Zoom bombing and all the good things that could happen. So we're just ironing out the glitches, but you all soon will get the calendar. But I just wanted to let you all know in here that on February 1st, we were starting the City Hall Art Gallery exhibit and the theme is celebration of family, freedom, healing, and love. So please stop by, patronize the art gallery. We have some amazing artwork coming in. We've reached out to local artists. So it's going to be as we do every year, except it won't be the reception and many folks there because of out of respect for COVID. At the same time, in conjunction to that, we have the Downtown Gallery 454, and it's a photography exhibit. It is a must-see. That theme is family, peace, justice, equality. And we are so proud to have our photographer, our very own Sharon Caulfield. I call her Dean because she is our custodian, period. So she's going to be showing her works and it's just going to be displaying photography during our year, last year with the pandemic, as well as with the Black Lives Matter protests. Our virtual Zoom events are exciting. February 3rd, we're going to host the historian Karen McGinnis, who is going to feature life of Danny Carey Fairweather, who was a member of the Governor of Bellingham, Carey House. So she is going to be, all of our events are going to be Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00. So just for consistency, you will know in February, keep your calendars clear, on Wednesday evenings, 6:00 to 8:00. February 10th, we're going to have a short film and discussion on assumptions and stereotypes. And it's called Silent Beats. And that will be by another wonderful person in our community. Because we have so much talent right here, we're keeping it right here. That would be our facilitator, Khalil Sadiq, who is a racial equity consultant. So please tune in. February 18th is going to be No Justice, No Peace. It's a conversation on racial disparities in the US judicial system. So we're asking our community, the BIPOC community, what in the law needs to change for Black, Brown, and people of color? This is a conversation with Associate Justice of Superior Court Judge Angel Kelly. She enjoyed our community so much and loves to be a part of it that she asked to come back and have a conversation during Black History Month. So that will be very interesting as well. Our last event is on February 24th. And guys, brace yourselves because it's a tribute to Chelsea Trailblazers. And our theme this year, because there's great people doing great things, but we're looking at a community responding to a pandemic and racial inequality. We're celebrating all of you, starting from you all, the city counselors, the gatekeepers, the city manager, all of the organizations, and just the community coming together in a coordinated response for the pandemic response and social inequities. So you know what? It's going to be amazing. We're entertaining all of the organizations, again, starting with you because it absolutely takes a village to raise a child in our community, band together like none out there, because I work for the state and I deal with a lot of communities. And you guys, five star. So just know that you all will be celebrated on February 24th. And that's a tribute to Chelsea Trailblazers, which is a community in response as a whole. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do. I respect you all, I love you all, and I hope that you join us each and every evening and the information will be coming to you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. Did I see Ms. Caulfield raise her hand? Would you like to speak? No? Okay.
I was just saying to thank you to Joan for that good explanation. Thank her for putting all of this together also. We're looking forward to seeing you and hearing you, of course, on the video conferences that we'll have.
Anyone else? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. We'll now move on to item five, the approval of the minutes.
And file the minutes of January 11th, 2021.
Counselor Garcia asked that we accept and file the minutes of the January 11th meeting under suspension. Is there any objection? Seeing none, that has been accepted. Moving on to the next. Communications from the city manager. We have a communication received from city manager Tom Ambrosino in regards to the Veterans Tax Work Off Program.
Dear counselors, I am writing in response to the recent city council order request and recreation of a tax work-off program for veterans with no age limits. The council should note that we already have such a program in place. In November of 2017, the city council created such a program by local adoption of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5N. That program is codified in our ordinances at Chapter 26, Section 26-3. That program has no age limit requirement. Any veteran, regardless of age, may take part. A veteran in the program can work off a maximum amount of $1,500 from his or her tax bill.
Counselor Recupro.
I have a question. To most veterans that go...
Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion? You need a motion on the floor.
Motion to adopt under suspension if there's no objection.
Accept and file.
Then I have a question.
You may, what is the question? Through?
The question is to the city manager, I would like the city manager to tell all the veterans that this program can also be used, if you already receive veterans, the discount for being a veteran. So you could use, if you live in your house, the residential exemption, the veterans exemption, and the work-off program. All three could be used.
Okay.
So I want the veterans to know that they could use all three.
Is that a question or a statement? You're asking a question or not?
I'm asking the question if all three could be used.
So through the chair, the question is of, if this is in place, how many benefits is it can be used as a cumulative, including the residential tax exemption? The city manager is nodding in the affirmative. So all of those exemptions and tax credits available to veterans or families of veterans who have gave their life and their ultimate sacrifice to this country qualify for those benefits. Moving on to the next communication, we have a communication from the city manager in regards to a grant from Nature Conservancy.
Dear counselors, recently the Department of Housing and Community Development secured a grant from the Nature Conservancy. The Nature Conservancy is a charitable environmental organization that aids in the protection, conservation, and restoration of impacted land and wetlands through financial support and technical oversight. This specific $25,000 grant will provide funds for the city of Chelsea's Island and River Flood Resilience Project. That project seeks to enhance flooding resilience and environmental restoration of the island and river area within the city of Chelsea. The grant will supplement the existing funding that the city already has in place for this project from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. A copy of the award letter is attached. And according to what the Massachusetts... And according to what the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I am requesting that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant of $25,000 for the Nature Conservancy. A copy of this required order is attached.
Counselor Robinson.
Communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Counselor Robinson moves that we accept and file this under suspension. There'll be new business, something under new business later on. We have a communication received from the city manager, Tom Ambrosino, in regards to the request for a state address. Dear councilors, I am writing a request that the city council allow me some time at the upcoming February 8th, 2021 city council meeting to provide a state of the city address. I expect the address to be brief, lasting no more than 10 to 15 minutes. Thank you in advance for your consideration. What is the wish of the council?
Accept and file communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that communication has been accepted under suspension. And next communication from Tom Ambrosino in regards to reappointments to the boards and commissions.
Reappointments to boards and commissions. Dear councilors, pursuant to the Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to the boards and commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Board of Assessors, Mr. Phyllis Goldberg, One Boatswain's Way, Chelsea, and Kathleen Conlon, 8322 Street, Chelsea, for new three-year terms expiring on February 28th, 2024. For reappointment to the Board of Health, Mr. Ola Biod, 9 Eden Street, Chelsea, Mr. Richard Jackson Jr., 250 Congress Ave, Chelsea, and Dr. Dean Zerres, 1441 Center Street, Newton, for three-year terms expiring on February 28th, 2024. For reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Beth Novak, 126 Bloomingdale Street, Chelsea, and Ms. Christina Lawson Shaw Burns, 604 Washington Ave, Apartment 5, Chelsea, to new three-year terms expiring on February 28th, 2024. For appointment to the Board of Registered Voters, Mr. Michael D. O'Shea, 124 Addison Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2024. For reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Mr. Stephen Serikas, 137 Prescott Ave, and Judah Dyer, 11 Hertz Street, Chelsea, and Ms. Devon Braun, 220 Spencer Avenue, Chelsea, for new three-year terms expiring on February 28th, 2024. For reappointment to the Council on Elder Affairs, Ms. Rebecca Swope, 2922 Street, Chelsea, Antonio Ortega, P.O. Box 410016, Cambridge, Ms. Irene Malachowski, 23 Garland Street, Chelsea, and Mr. Greg Walzak, 124 Chester Ave, Chelsea, for new three-year terms expiring on February 28th, 2024. For reappointment to the Cultural Council, Ms. Marlene Jennings, 33 Breakwater Drive, Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring on December 15th, 2023. For reappointment to the Economic Development Board, Ms. Tana Bugdava, 823 Broadway, Chelsea, for a new five-year term expiring on February 28th, 2026. For reappointment to the Traffic and Parking Commission, Ms. Renee Hibbert, 175 Carter Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term expiring in 2024. For reappointment to the zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Joseph Mahoney, 200 Captain's Row, Chelsea, and Ms. Marilyn Vega Torres, 77 SXP, Chelsea, for new three-year term expiring on February 28th, 2024. I respectfully request your approval of these reappointments, including the residency waivers for Dr. Zerres and Mr. Ortega. Copies of the resumes for the new appointees are attached.
Counselor Robinson asks that we send this to a second reading. No, this is the first one.
This is the first one.
This is a new batch.
It's under second business?
No, that's the next.
This is a new batch.
Oh, got it.
This, this, this set of reappointments is the first time in front of the board. We have an additional one coming up later for a second reading that we will be adopting.
It is.
Counselor Robinson's already made that motion. We have the next communication. Communications from petitions to the city council from the city clerk Jeanette White, Jeanette Citron White in regards to the January 5th, 2021 Parking Commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept and file.
If there's no objection.
We have a motion to adopt under suspension if there's no objection, seeing none. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, communication from Council President Avellaneda regarding the creation of the Special Subcommittee for the Redistricting of New Wardes and Precincts.
Accept and file communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that motion passes.
Final communication.
We have a, also a letter from, from President Avellaneda in regards to appointment of Counselor Robinson and Counselor Vido to the Interview Committee for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officers. Is there a motion on the floor?
Accept and file communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none. We'll now move on to second readings.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business. Do we have something on the?
Yeah, I want to, we had a conference back in January in regards to an order that we had a conference on that the city hereby accepts the provisions of Mass. General Law C60 83, 3F for the purpose of creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute.
Hold on one second. The counselor is asking, Counselor Robinson is asking to pull out of unfinished business. I'll read it. It is a motion that was introduced on January 13th at the first reading by Counselor Robinson. It was sent to a, second reading by Counselor Calvin Brown, ordered that the city hereby accepts the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 60, Section 3F for the purpose of creating a Veterans Assistance Fund and operating such fund in full accordance with the statute. Counselor Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, actually, actually, this, this goes back to January 13th of 2020. So there's, there's no mistake in our, when it actually happened. This is a volunteer assistance program that people can donate money to the Veterans Assistance Fund that will help veterans during the year who might be shot on fuel assistance or, or rent or anything of that nature. And it would be a fund that would be established by people donating to this fund and creating a fund.
We'll ask for a roll call vote?
Yes.
A yes vote is to accept the provisions. Counselor Vido?
I'm sorry, I, I have no idea. Like, we, have we even had a conversation about this?
We did at the previous meeting. We had spoken on this. It is an adoption, and we also had a conference on this.
On January 27th.
On January 27th.
We're talking about last year?
No, January 27th of this year.
We, we had a.
I'm sorry. 2020, 20, January 2020. Sorry, my apologies.
It's okay, I just, I don't remember. I'd have to vote no, unfortunately. I don't know what we're talking about.
Okay.
The Veterans Assistance Fund, this is, uh, accepting the provisions that's already in the Massachusetts General Laws. We have to accept it in order to institute it.
It's a work program for veterans. They'll participate in some time working for the City of Chelsea in order to get some credits.
Can I just ask why we waited a year to talk about this now? Why it's just coming up?
I think the, the, I think what happened is it got lost in a shuffle of COVID. We introduced it, uh, we had a conference, and then ran right into, uh, if you remember, January, late February, and then by the time, all of a sudden, we were dealing with COVID and suspended meetings and such. So it just fell by the wayside.
Okay, so I just, Mr. President, I don't want to hold anything up. If I vote in the affirmative, I can still change my vote if, if, by Wednesday, right?
If you, if you have any reservations within the next 24 hours. You have 24 hours to file with the clerk a, to.
Motion to reconsider.
Reconsider, file a reconsider.
All right, thank you.
So would you like to still vote?
No, I'll vote yes. I'm sorry, I don't want to hold anything up. I vote yes, and then I'll do my homework.
Yep.
Counselor Vido votes yes. Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson? Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted.
Moving on to the next commu, next section, we have second readings. We have the communications received from the city manager in regards to reappointments to the boards and commission. This was originally read on the January 5th, or presented to us on the January 5th. The reappointments were quickly, James Sullivan back to chief assessing, Emmanuel Telvillas to the Board of Health, a new board, a Robert Lynch to the Conservation Commission, Mark Rossi to licensing, Sylvia Ramirez to the Planning Board, Aaron Kramer reappointed to the Traffic Commission, and those are the appointments. This is a second reading, and we'll have a roll call vote. Who?
Adoption if there are no objections.
Counselor Robinson is asking for a roll call vote.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabat?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. Now, we have a second reading of an order introduced by Counselor Garcia. A request that city add $25,000 to the Chelsea Funeral Fund managed by St. Luke's Church.
I make a motion to move to roll call, and I wish to speak on it.
The Counselor Garcia is asked to have a roll call vote. You have the floor, Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first of all, I would like to begin as a follow-up conversation to our previous meeting. Our previous meeting, as, as you may have known, Father Edgar was able to be here. This motion that you have in front of us is a motion to allocate $25,000, to continue to allocate $25,000 one more time to the Chelsea Funeral Fund. And the reason I ask this is because, first of all, I want to commend all of you because as a body, this council has shown and demonstrated immense compassion for our community. Not only have we helped with relief efforts by helping our residents with rental assistance, we've also helped our small businesses, we've also helped allocate 380,000 funds for La Colaborativa's food pantry. We've helped in so many ways in different pockets of need of this community. And we also provided a seed fund for a Chelsea Funeral Fund to help many of the families coping with the tragic externalities of COVID-19. I have been working very closely with Father Edgar throughout the past few months. And unfortunately, one of the conversations that keeps coming up with our families here in Chelsea is how to pay for the cost of the funeral of their loved ones. And it's a tragic conversation, it's a very unfortunate conversation to have, especially when death has been so unexpected. As of today, all of you received an email from Tom Ambrosino showing that we've lost 206 residents to this pandemic. And the need for our families to get some sort of financial assistance is there. So I, I will keep this brief, and, and I will say I am incredibly proud of the work that we've done as a body in terms of relief efforts, in terms of showing our service and our desire to be compassionate leaders. And I ask you to, to please help us fund this. $25,000, we know that, that is not too much to ask for, especially because I'm sure many of you have received calls from your constituents asking for resources to, to pay for, for some of their loved ones' funeral costs. So I'll keep it short. I really hope you, you vote all in favor of this fund and, and continue to, to motivate and encourage the incredible work, and as one of my colleagues said, the, the godly work that, that Father Edgar is doing at St. Luke's Church. We know that Father Edgar is a, a faith leader here in our community that for years has run an amazing food pantry, and he has been an amazing manager of this fund. So thank you, everyone. I do hope you vote in favor for these $25,000.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes. Just for clarification purposes, I'd like to offer amendment that we send this to conference. We do, we're not in a position to be able to raise money. The requests would have to come from the city manager to this body in order for us to be able to take any action on it. So I would ask that we send it to a conference so that we can have a conference on it and have the city manager come in and figure out where the money will come from in order to help in this situation.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Avellaneda?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I agree. This body has shown a lot of support for our residents and our businesses to deal with what we're going through, what the state, nation, and the world is going through with COVID. These are unprecedented, unprecedented times. And we've, and the idea was that during these times that are above the norm, that assistance is warranted. The only caveat, the only amendment that I would support on this is that for those who are suffering or need a burial as part of COVID, as a result of a COVID, then I would say I support that. Because to open this fund just for general purposes, realistically, this could be funded any and every year in our community. But specifically, all the examples that were cited was because there's a situation, particular situation out there that this body felt that we needed to address, and that's why we have food lines, that's why we needed to give our local businesses money, and so forth, because of the impact COVID had. This, particularly how it's written, is too broad and doesn't say that if someone passes away and doesn't have the funds because of COVID, then they're open up to that funding. That's the one condition I would like to see here, specifically. Because otherwise, yes, we know how tough it is in this community, Chelsea, and what funeral costs are and such. Unfortunately, I know that you all see the same GoFundMe pages and requests when they are lost out there, not just this year, but in years in the past. But specifically, I think that I'd have to have, for me to build in favor of this to be fair, is to say that the funding, this $25,000 would only be applied to those who suffered or lost someone because of COVID, because that's a situation that was unforeseen. That's my two cents. And now, if this wants to get sent to conference, that's fine, I'll wait. But I at least would want to offer that amendment that it would be related, used only for COVID-related funerals. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Avellaneda. I see Counselor Damali Vido.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I guess, for me, I understand what Council President Avellaneda is saying, and I agree. For me, because I know that the Funeral Fund that was created was specifically for folks as a result of COVID, I just kind of assumed it was a given. But if we need to kind of, just kind of explain that in order for us to all be on the same page, I have no doubts. I am prepared to vote for that tonight. I don't know that it necessarily needs to go to a Subcommittee on Conference, just because I know that there is need. And Father Edgar expressed that there were people that had been asking since December, and he was running low on funds. And so I don't want to hold this up any longer. So I, I don't know what we need to do, but I'm prepared to vote for this tonight. We did talk about it briefly at the last council meeting. So I would assume that the two readings that it is required for any money situations would be okay, unless the president is ruling this out of order. I would like some clarification around that. Other than that, I think, I am really proud of my sister colleague for bringing this up because this is something that we need to be talking about. I, since I've been on the council, you know, we've spent a lot of money on almost everything. We spent money this year, creating jobs, apartments. And we're getting to a point right now where if we don't start to slow down and really think about where we're spending our money, if we don't start to slow down and really think about where we're spending our money, we're making decisions that is going to impact the future of Chelsea for generations to come. I've seen what's happened to Chelsea in the past when we went broke. I'm very, very concerned that we're not paying enough attention to the money that we are spending, which is why I'm going to be tightening up my purse strings going into the budget season. This, however, is a need. We have experienced great loss in this community, not just death, but grief, loss of security, loss of school, so much loss. And if the least that we can do is fund this program for Father Edgar, I am more than happy to do that. I would like for someone to explain to me about the protocol and the process, because I am prepared to vote for this tonight, and kind of hoping this doesn't need to go to another meeting, when I think we're kind of all on the same page here.
Thank you. Counselor Recupero?
It's a good thing that we're doing, because right now, we do need something like this. I don't even think it's enough money. $25,000 is not even enough to do anything for, if you really want to help the people. $25,000 can't do nothing, because you can't even bury one person with that. So, this is just a token to say to the people, yes, we're with you, we're trying to help you. This is one way. We don't know, because it's hard to get the money. Right now, the money's hard to come from anywhere, but it's a good thing to do, to help the people if they need it, and they should be available to anybody that can't afford it. They can't, even a little bit is better than nothing at all. And this is a good cause to try to help somebody. I don't know if $25,000 is enough. I support something like this. I know the city's not in the business of giving out money, because taxpayer pay for it and everything. I understand all that, but this has nothing to do with that. This is humanitarian, trying to help somebody, they can't do nothing. So, what's wrong with once in a while, our city itself saying to the people, yes, we're going to try to help you? I know, we have a heart, and I believe my fellow councils have a heart, and we all have the best interest. We're trying to help people. The problem is, is trying to figure it out, how to get it, and how much do we really need to help the people? Like I said before, the city's not in the business of doing this. That's not the issue. The issue is, is trying to help a poor person or any person that can't afford it, just to give them a little comfort in the time of their most needing. That's the only thing I can say. I am in favor of it, whatever it is. I know the city says you can't afford it. I'm a taxpayer, my taxes go to the yin yang right now, but I would still give money for that, because I believe that that's a worthy cause to try to help somebody.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I think, again, I mean, I'm sure not one of us here on this council has a problem with giving this money to a specific need, and I think we've always been clear on the specific of the need. So, what we have here tonight is just a little misunderstanding of what the specific need is. And I think if you want to find out, and some of the speakers had stated, that they would like to know or have an understanding of how it's being used, then it should go to a subcommittee on conference and find out exactly what is defined to be done. I think, you know, the fund that we set up, if it's for COVID-19 death cases, then it should be for COVID-19 death cases. That's the only question that we're questioning here tonight. It shouldn't be a broad, oh, someone died, unfortunate, you know, they went to a place and they got money. You're taking away from the purpose that we're sitting the money aside for. And the other part of it is that we should include the council and the city manager to say, hey, we got this, and we have the money, first of all. But it'd be nice to do things in order, to find out exactly what we're doing and what we're offering. So, when we do hear stories that, you know, the reason why folks can't get it from their parents or their loved ones have passed from COVID-19 is because it's been used for other things, that's not the intention. The intention is here, we want to set up, because we just heard the number, over 200 folks have passed away in our community and needed some type of assistance. We're just getting some type of assistance. Yes, each and every one of us have contributed to a GoFundMe program or site when someone passed away, because we have that in our heart to help out when we can help out. So, it's not the question that we don't want to help out. The question here is clarity. Let us get some clarity, let us know what we as a body's doing, and then we have checks and balances. So, I think, you know, if you have councils that want to send it to subcommittee, I'd be all for it. I thought, again, that it was directly funded for COVID-19. But if there's some questions, I think we need to understand that, hey, by the way, maybe it's not just for COVID-19, but it's also for anyone that passed away that could say, hey, I know a place where I can go, and they're giving out funds. Because we're opening up a can of worms, and I don't think that's the intention. We want to help people that really need it, that's been devastated by this COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. I see the hand of Cheryl, our city solicitor, Cheryl Watson.
I'm responding to something that Counselor Robinson stated. You are seeking funds out of the stabilization fund?
No, that is incorrect. That's not listed here. There's nothing in our voting.
Well, it's supposed to list where the money's coming from, and it should be based upon a recommendation by the city manager in order to spend money. The city council does not have the authority to just spend money. So, I think the process may need to take a step back. You approve the spending of money, you don't determine the spending of money. You do so upon the recommendation of the city manager, and you have to tell the city auditor where this money's coming from and what's its specific use. So, the actual order may be out of order through you, Vice Chair, to the council president, just based on form. I'm not making any decision based on why or how, what you're doing. I mean, just how you're doing it, not the reasons behind it.
Counselor Garcia?
Thank you. So, I do appreciate all the, Cheryl, I appreciate your feedback on the matter. I do want to clarify, this is simply a request. So, it's a request for Tom Ambrosino to look at the management. Nowhere here does it say that it's to be removed from general stabilization, nowhere near does it say that. So, I do want to clarify that, and I think it would be helpful if, it would be helpful for some of the counselors here who may not be aware of the Chelsea Funeral Fund. The Chelsea Funeral Fund was actually, as Counselor Vido established, it was created for the purpose of responding to COVID-19 cases. Every single one of you received an email over the summer from Mimi Gramy explaining what the fund was, how much money this body, this city administration put into it. We actually put $25,000. And you also received the application that the Chelsea residents had to complete and how the program works. So, you know, I highly advise for all of you to go back and look at that email. It was sent over the summer. I know that we were barded with so many emails, but the Chelsea Funeral Fund, for any speculation, it was created specifically to respond for COVID-19, and it was created with city funds. So, I'm sure that Tom Ambrosino can add more to that, but considering the hesitation of two of the members of this body, I am willing to make an amendment, to make it more implicit that it's only for COVID-19 members, so we can do that and move to a roll call.
I still believe that the way it is written and as explained by our city solicitor, that this request is out of order. As it reads, "Request that the city add $25,000 to the Chelsea General Fund managed by the St. Luke's Church." In order for most orders and requests explicitly state that the city manager prepare. It doesn't state the city, the city is just a too general term. It doesn't order the city manager to prepare an order for the city council for a budgetary move. So, I think that was, is the required language here. So, given that...
Mr. President, can I make an amendment?
You may.
I make an amendment to change the wording to read, "Request that the city manager propose an order to appropriate $25,000 to the Chelsea Funeral Fund for COVID-19 death cases operated by St. Luke's Church."
In the city of Chelsea.
In the city of Chelsea. And I reiterate that the city manager proposed an order to appropriate $25,000.
Counselor Robinson on the amendment?
Yes. I offered the amendment to go to conference because there's confusion. We can't appropriate the money. The money has to be appropriated by the city manager to this body. But there's been a lot of confusion about how this is written and where it is, and I thought the best thing for us to do, move it to conference, figure out where the money is going to come from. I don't think anybody's against where the money is, but I think we need to know in front of us what account it's coming out of, so that we're able to know what account it's coming out of and where it's going to be. And we all know that it's going to be for the funeral fund. But I think my motion was to move it to conference, so we can talk about it and come to a solution around the issue.
Well, I think the amendment offered by Counselor Garcia is going to allow the city manager to explain explicitly where the funding's going to come from, so at least that's the way the amendment is on the floor, so.
Yeah, but I, no.
Leo, well, so, right now, first, we have any motion to send it to conference. So, the roll call that we're presently going to have is whether or not we go to conference first, followed by, I will be, my amendment will be withdrawn, and then we will be voting on the amendment proposed by Counselor Garcia. So, first, please, the roll call, yes, to go to conference, no, to continue discussion.
And then, if it doesn't go to conference, we move to vote on the amendment?
That is correct. If we vote no to move to conference, the matter stays on the floor, and then we discuss your amendment.
Thank you.
A yes, we'll send this to conference, a no, keeps it here, and we will be voting on the amendment offered by Counselor Garcia.
Counselor Vido?
No.
Counselor Avellaneda?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Zabat?
No.
Three in favor, eight opposed, the amendment is defeated.
The proposal to send this to conference is defeated. We now will be voting on the amendment offered by Counselor Garcia, that the request is to have the city manager propose a $25,000 expenditure from a funding source to be determined by him for the funeral fund managed by St. Luke's Church for COVID-related deaths within the city of Chelsea. A yes vote adopts the measure, a no vote defeats the amendment and the measure as a whole. Counselor Brown on the amendment?
The reason we have voted yes, that because there's still unclarity of what we're doing. We actually have an order here in words. We have nothing before us in the document. I've never seen us vote on something that we don't have in front of us. I mean, usually, you will go out and do, get the document or take a break, and then you come back and you say, this is what you're voting on. You're voting on words of what's being said and what's being offered. But again, we're creating this as we go along to make this work, regardless of what the city manager has to say regarding us about the money, where it's going to come or where. We've already now stated, okay, we got around one hurdle, now we got the support to go on, so now we want the city manager to do exactly what we're telling him to do. That's not how orders are taken in. That's not how we should be doing this here. That's not how we should be doing this. None of us have an order in our hand to look at this order, and again, we, one week, a week from now, we'll be here, we'll probably be voting in favor of this. For at least, we had the time to look at this and go on and say, okay, this is what's going on. Every time we come to this point here, on this motion here tonight, we're going to take it back out, and then we're going to tweak it until we get it right, and then that's how you're going to pass it. That's not right tonight. It's not right for the people that's going to be trying to get the support, it's not right for us, they're now putting it on the city manager lap without him having a say-so. We've allowed the city solicitor say something, we haven't had the city manager say anything. Someone's going to say something like this here. Well, let's hear what the city manager has to say now, and then we'll move on after that. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Thank you. I rise to just what was just stated by my colleague, Counselor Brown. As someone who has personally proposed expenditures, yes, there are times when we make suggestions to the city manager on how to spend money. I just recently had a conversation today about the expenditure of money when we're going to finish that sound study that I have been pushing for, for the last four years. And he said, okay, soon, because obviously, we don't want to do a sound study when Logan is down, I don't know, 75% of its flights. But did, how did that ball get rolling? Because I came to this floor and I said, you know what, city manager? I want you to spend money on this sound study, because the city depends on it. It didn't come from him, it was a suggestion from all the complaints from residents, and I suggested it to him. And then he came back to us and responded with a letter and said, yes or no. So, he came back to the floor. How many ti, I don't even have enough fingers and toes to count the number of times. Counselor Recupero has said something to the city manager of, please, I want you to spend money on this, and then the city manager, in a letter and a letter and a communication at the very next meeting, yes, we can do it, no, I don't think you should. And we read it, and it's a suggestion. Counselor Recupero has many times offered some expenditure of money, and then the city manager responds and says, I think this is a good idea. No, I don't think spending $3 million to give a tax credit, residential tax credit, is worth it, will bankrupt it. I remember that one. There's plenty of suggestions that have come from this body to the city manager, and then we get a response, and then you've got 11 councils who say, yes, we agree with you, colleague, no, we don't. So, I don't want to get lost in a shuffle that this body does not make suggestions to the city manager of ideas of how we can do it. This is a very simple, straightforward request by my colleague, by the vice president, saying, look, there's money that needs to be spent, this is how I suggest it. City manager, please make a proposal back to us of how it can be done, and then we'll see if it comes to the floor. And in it, he may respond to us and say, I don't think it's a good idea, I think it's a bad idea, I think it's a good idea, I have no opinion. He may say one of those three things. But at the end of the day, have we done it? Has anybody on this floor done it? Yes, we have. So, let's not think that we are recreating anything new. I'm sure we're all going to have someone suggest something. Hey, maybe they're saying, you know what, I want you to spend X amount of dollars on Quigley Park. Didn't we have that suggestion? Yes, we did. Many times, we have ideas of what each district councillor wants to see in their district, and then they just wait for the response from the city manager, and then that person has to get the votes on this council. Counselor Garcia is asking the same thing that has been done before her, is make a suggestion of where money is she sees a need, she's asking the city manager to come back to us, propose it in some form or fashion, and then we will vote for it. So, let's just follow the same pattern that everybody here, once or any other time, has done, and no need to go to a conference on something that is a simple, easy expenditure. It's simple, it's money to... It's money to pay for funerals for people who died from COVID-19 in our poor community. It's simple. And where the money's going to come from, he's going to say, probably general funds, free cash, whatever it may be. Pick your poison, we'll know and we'll see it. But let's just not complicate this matter. It's been done before, there is precedent. So I hope my colleagues will just entertain this one request from our colleagues, and then when the time comes, when it goes to two more readings, because it's going to be introduced, and then go to another reading, so we probably won't be approving this thing till the end of February, you'll have more than enough time to know what, when, if, whatever, and then say yes or no.
Thank you, Counselor.
So let's just go.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Todd Taylor, and then I see Counselor Ennio Lopez, and Counselor Melinda Vega, were you also interested in speaking? Okay, I see Counselor Todd Taylor, I'll begin with you.
Thank you. So I wanted to send this to conference because, you know, it seemed like the, the, the original motion was, was out of order, and I'd like to know more about it as well. If, if, if the amendment to the, to the motion says that you're requesting something from the city manager to come back and see if that's feasible, and, and to have all the proper procedures met, then I've got no problem voting for the amendment. My problem is, is that you, I think with the, I don't think the council has the power to, to tell the city manager that he needs to do this. So that's, that's where my problem came with, and so, you know, this is more of a, a, you know, it's just more of a procedural thing that this, this body doesn't have the authority to do it, like, like Cheryl had said. So Cheryl, can I ask you, please, through the chair, if, if that amendment is, it, it's just asking the city manager to come back with a proposal? If that's the case, then I've got no problem doing that.
The amendment is proper. I, I believe it is proper, yes.
Thank you. That's all I need to know.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Anyone else? Counselor Ennio Lopez.
For some proof, for, for whatever reason, we always spend money. And when we need this money to help our, our community, our people who are dying from COVID, we put this problem to, to approve this money? Come on, guys, let's help our community. Especially if this is funded for the people who die from COVID. Let's help them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ennio Lopez. Counselor Robinson? And then Counselor Vito.
Well, I, I was a little confused, because there's no mention anywhere that it was for, for the virus, residents of this community. So therefore, my, my confusion is, I felt the order that was presented was out of order. We never should have taken it up. That's up to the chair to, to, to rule that. I mean, I have no objections in, in supporting the measure. I'm just saying that we should have did it properly, and a request should have went to the city manager, and he could have came back and said, what part of money that we were going to, we were going to be able to use this money from? It would have been a little bit clearer for me to stand here to be able to support that. I think we're kind of going about it kind of in a backdoor manner here. And I know it will go to a couple of readings, so I, I won't have a problem in supporting it, but I think we were wrong in how we presented it here tonight.
Counselor Vito, and then Counselor Recupero.
Thank you, Counselor Garcia. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say that I'll be supporting this amendment. I, I would have supported it at the last meeting if we were able to talk about it then. While I understand the concern that some of my colleagues have with respect to process, the fact is that Barbit's Rules of Order allow for there to be more than one way to skin a cat. And so I don't even like that saying. I don't know why anybody would want to skin a cat. But nonetheless, I just, I, I'm really, I really think that this is really important for us to have this conversation, and I've seen things get done in this city council that nobody ever questions, and this seems like a very minor thing to actually be scrutinizing. So I just really want to applaud the maker of the motion and our president for listening to what the city solicitor's concerns were about this being out of order, amending it on the floor as to not waste any more of our time or taxpayers' dollars who are watching us on TV's time, fixing this on the floor, showing that we're going to act like adults and working something out, and getting right to it so we can vote for this, so that the city manager could then propose it, you know, the, the official way. But I have seen this time and time, and time and time again, and we just really just need to kind of move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vito. Counselor Recupero.
We arguing over nothing. Why don't we just send it to the city manager? Let the city manager decide. Like, like Counselor Avellaneda said, I do that all the time. And then the ultimate goal is the counselors themselves decide what to do. Let the city manager find out and figure it out, and then he comes back to us and says, this is good and this is bad, I can't, where I'm going to get it. And then we vote on it. This is just a big nothing. Set it up where the city manager can determine how it is. Once the city manager sends this back to us, then we all know what to do and exactly how we're going to go about it. So this is the whole thing. Plain and simple. Send it to the city manager and let him decide, and let him determine how it goes. That's it. We don't want to break procedure, we don't want to do anything different. Just request it, the city manager, look into it. What is the probability of getting this fund and how to do it? That's it. So what are we arguing about? Send it, vote, and give it to him. Thank you.
Yes, we're done with debating here. It looks like there's no more raised hands. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to make the amendment, so a request will be sent to the city manager to present something to the city council at a future council meeting. And a no vote will defeat the amendment and the, will go back to the original.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit.
Yes.
Eleven in favor and underposed, motion adopted.
Next item on the agenda is in order introduced by Counselor Robinson in regards to approving a nature conservancy grant in the amount of $25,000 to enhance the task of deliverable related to the Island and River Fund Resilience Project. Counselor Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. There were no objections.
Counselor Robinson is asking a roll call vote on the acceptance of the $25,000 grant money from the nature conservancy grant. A yes vote will, a, a, a yes vote will adopt the, adopt the acceptance of those $25,000.
Is there a letter associated with this, Mr. President?
Counselor Vito, I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, I just, I guess there a letter associated with it? Do people just grant us money and we just write orders? Or like, is there something that came along with that?
There was a communication in the beginning that we read on the nature conservancy as part of this, and Counselor Robinson stated that there was something later coming up, and that's, that, that's what this is.
Got it, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Zabit.
Yes.
Eleven in favor and underposed, motion adopted. That's all you have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I'll accept if there's any public announcements for this upcoming meeting. Anyone?
I want to have.
Counselor Recupero has an announcement.
Okay, the public announcement is there. I have it written over there, so I want to make sure I write it to you. I'll say it to you, then I'll give it to my colleague, and she will explain it to you in Spanish. I could do it myself, but I'd rather have a lady do it. It looks better. On February, homeowner stabilization program. I don't know if people know. Applications by February 2021, we approved this money. The income limit is 100%. One unit gets $5,000, two unit gets $8,000, three and four unit get $10,000. So this money is on a lottery. You can apply it to whatever, if you, if you have fallen within difficulties within this time, and you can't do it, you can apply for this fund. I think the city manager told me there's a total of $750,000 available to the people. So anybody that doesn't know, they should go downstairs to planning and development and ask for an application and fill it. And then you go to a lottery. So anybody can go. I think the maximum you can make is $100,000. So if you make $100,000 or below, you can apply. But then if you make over $100,000, you don't need it. So here, my colleague is going to write this to you.
Counselor Garcia, I think he-
Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Giovanni. I will translate.
Any, any other announcements from colleagues? No. At this time, I will now open the floor up for any moments of silence. Counselor Ennio Lopez.
To have a moment of silence for Jorge Aaron Martinez, who passed, who died on January 20. He was a long time president of Chelsea. He was from Honduras. All of his family live in the city of Chelsea too. And we'd like to have a moment of silence for him.
Anyone else? Counsel Brown?
A moment of silence for a national hero who passed away this year, I mean, this past weekend. Henry Hank Aaron. A lot of us, if you're a baseball fan, you know him for 715, but he actually has 755 home runs. One of the greatest baseball players that ever lived a game, that ever played a game. But beyond playing baseball, he is a man that came up in an era where a lot of hatred, a lot of evil malice was towards him because he was breaking records that were set by premier white baseball players. And because of his color of his skin, he was targeted. His family members was targeted. And through it out, through all he went through, he never showed any ill malice or evil will towards anyone. I mean, if you listen to the reports this past weekend, everyone said he did it with grace, he did it with love, and he did it with determination to show us that this world could be a better world if we love one another despite how they treat us. So my thoughts and prayers are with him, his family, and want to thank him for all that he gave those that loved this sport of baseball, and also those that aspire to be better human beings.
Thank you, everybody.